God hit me with a mallet.
I call the Norton City Council Committee Work Session for Monday, February 3rd, 2020, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent reflection.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Karen.
Here.
Mr. Towesley.
Here.
Ms. Whipke.
Here.
Mr. Pilat.
Here.
Mr. Kernan.
Here.
Communications from the public. When your name is called, please step forward. Give your name and address. You have five minutes. Tanya Vanderbein.
Hi, Tanya Vanderbein, 3004 Union Street. I just have two questions. One, we've had some discussions over the past months. I haven't been here recently, but previous discussions over, discussions about putting something in writing in ordinance regarding upkeep, property upkeep. And I just wondered if that's been started, if there's been further discussions. I wanted to express having some involvement in that. I remain very frustrated with the situation. You've all heard me talk about many, many times. So that's one thing that I came to talk to you about. And the second thing I wanted to ask is if there was any information to be given regarding the additional parcels that are being rezoned to industry in that area behind where I live. It's quite a few. So I'm just wondering, you know, if there's a plan in place and if anybody can share any information about that.
So I do know that we are going to start talking about the property maintenance code tonight.
Oh.
That's letter B on the agenda.
Great.
So we're actually going to-
I hadn't read your agenda.
No, that's okay.
So I apologize. I apologize.
We're actually going to start moving in that direction, getting, collecting information. And then we're going to go from there. As far as the rezoning of those pieces of property, I think, do we have public hearings coming up on those?
February 10th.
February 10th. Okay. So, public hearings are February 10th.
That's just for the rezoning, though, to pass the rezoning, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no information regarding what the plan is for those parcels?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Very good.
Most of those are private property that are, have asked to be rezoned.
Well, they're all vacant.
Right.
They're all vacant.
Farm land or whatever, but most of them are the property owners that actually lived there that have asked to have them rezoned. A lot of them.
There's like eight, I think. Isn't there?
There's, well, as far as parcels are concerned, yeah, there's, there's a number of them.
There is. I just, I guess I just assumed based on the experience with the five that are directly behind me, that this was in addition to what is, appears to be the push for that, for that area to be industry. So I just wondered if the, the purpose of rezoning those parcels was because Norton has a plan to bring in something on that other side.
So I don't know that Norton has a plan to bring something in. I do know that we have had requests to rezone some of those.
Okay.
And that's what we're going to have the public hearing for.
Okay. Very good. Just wanted to ask.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks. All right. Committee of the whole, letter A, Wolf Creek Watershed Conservancy District, Mr. Gaynor.
Thank you, Joe. Where I want to start here, as everybody knows, I had a, a meeting concerning this Wolf Creek Conservancy District, and approximately 30 people showed up and heard the presentation. And I definitely will not be trying to give the presentation over again here tonight. I just want to briefly go over a few things. As everyone knows, I think it's lived there for a length of time, that we have quite a bit of flooding problems in Copley, Barberton, and Norton especially, but just about any place that's around the Wolf Creek watershed area. And in that particular area of Wolf Creek, from its major tributaries, being of which our Hudson Run, Pigeon Creek are the two largest ones. And then there are actually 10 other, 10 other tributaries that dump into Wolf Creek. And I showed in the slides that I presented at this meeting that almost all of them, really all of them, are, are in need of dredging, rewidening to the point where they were in the 30s and 40s. Some of them have decreased in size from 80 feet wide to 20 feet wide. Some of them have sediment buildup that's been building up for 70 to 80 years, since they were actually cleaned out properly. Some of them have trees that have fallen across and caused temporary dams that nobody cleans out. Originally, these properties were, I mean, these creeks were dredged in the 30s, and then they were turned over to the property owners themselves to maintain by federal statute. And of course, the property owners could not afford to maintain them. There might be 200, 300 feet or more of creek that ran through their property, so they could not afford it. Therefore, they fell into disrepair. Nobody took care of the growth along the sides. There are trees as big around as I am, growing on the sides of some of them, some of these tributaries and Wolf Creek. Of course, anytime you've got a, something alongside the creek, it's going to stop every single piece of debris that comes down the creek and plugs it up and slows the water from moving on through like it should. And then the sediment builds up. And if you, when you started out with a creek that was at the high watermark, might have been four foot deep or three foot deep, normally would be a maximum up through there when it's not flooded through these tributaries. Then when you get this sediment build up and it's only a foot and a half deep, of course, you have less space for water to occupy. And of course, it's obvious where the water goes. It goes downstream. And it goes downstream so much faster because the channel has also been narrowed throughout the years by sediment building up on the sides, by trees collecting and growing in areas where they should not be within the waterways. So I hope everybody has a picture of 10 pretty good sized tributaries that feed into Wolf Creek eventually, north of Summit Road and east of Summit Road mainly, but also some of them are west of, of Summit and north. And all of these tributaries either come from Granger, Bath, Sharon, Fairlon, Akron-Copley, Norton, Wadsworth, a very small section of the Wadsworth City, small section of Wadsworth Township, and of course, Barberton. So all of these tributaries are contributing to the flooding problem that we receive here in Norton, Copley, and Barberton mainly, and of course downstream from us. If we're getting a lot of water with no place to go, then of course, the Muskingham is, and the Tuscarawas River areas are getting water that is not being properly maintained and held back up here. There are pictures that, that I've shown before that shows the, the actual obstructions in these creeks. And we as a city, nor can Copley, nor Barberton come singularly do anything about the flooding problem. It has to be all of the townships and, and cities involved north of Barberton that are within the Wolf Creek watershed. Those are the communities that are supplying water, contributing to the water that ends up in, in Wolf Creek. And of course, eventually, the Tuscarawas River downstream to the Muskingham and the Ohio. These areas are not equally responsible, but they all contribute to the water problem. If, if we, we, we voted as a council once before, Copley voted as township trustees, and Barberton voted as a, as a council to, to present this to the judge, proper judge, judicial authorities to create the Wolf Creek Water Conservancy. And it was presented, I believe Barberton had the responsibility to actually present the paperwork. All three of our communities approved it. Through our governing bodies, voted and approved it before I was on council. And consequently, it went to the judge, and the judge, after looking it over and studying it, decided to reject it on a, to me, it would have been a temporary rejection if it would have been re-presented at the time, but it wasn't. It was rejected on, and this is the reason it was rejected, there was 1,800 parcels that was already within the Muskingham watershed in the Barberton, South Barberton area. And those 1,800, approximately 1,800 parcels, were enough for him to reject it based on the fact that they would have had to, or somebody would have had to try to force them to pay two taxes, one for Wolf Creek and one for Muskingham, which of course would not be correct, shouldn't force them to pay two. The, the, the way I understand it, the, the estimates for these, for the Wolf Creek watershed to be created and maintained and do the work that's necessary was anywhere from several years ago, 20 sub million, to today's estimates of 75 or 80 million dollars to, to do the proper dredging, widening. And then a fund would be set up to maintain these tributaries. Unlike what was done in the 30s, there was no fund set up, and so the people who owned the properties that these streams went through could not possibly do it on their own. It's too expensive. Neither could one individual municipality. So that's why we originally voted to create a Wolf Creek watershed conservancy with Barberton, Norton, and, and Copley, which would have automatically included the other townships and cities that I read off a few minutes ago. Yellow Creek has been going through a court thing, and they, they, the way I understand it, was semi-approved. I've been told here by officials here that there may be some legal ramifications that they may have to fight in court. But as it stands now, the judges have created the Wolf Creek, I mean, I'm sorry, the Yellow Creek watershed. And some opinion here that we should wait to do anything with this until we see what happens to Yellow Creek. But I'm not in favor of waiting because it's taken Yellow Creek over two years just to get it through the courts due to legal judges retiring, dying, whatever. They changed judges two or three times. So anyway, it, it just didn't happen for over two years. And finally, it has finally started to come about. My suggestion is that, I'd like to read just a paragraph or two here if I could. There's, there's two major ways to, to create a watershed. And one of them is, I won't read it, I'll just say it. One of them is to get signatures from 500 individuals within the Wolf Creek watershed. They do not have to be, they don't have to be a, a citizen of Barberton, Norton, Copley. They can be from any place within Wolf Creek watershed. Only 500 signatures would create this watershed, or I mean, would send it to the judges by petition means. If we as a council vote, we can, as one council out of all of them, we can vote to send it to the judges, to have it either approved or disapproved by the judge. And that's my recommendation, that our council present this to the judges. We already have an ordinance drawn up from before, and I'm told that there's a possibility that that ordinance could be used again with minor tweaking, could be used again to send it to the judges with our, with our council's approval, vote to approve it. That could happen very quickly, could happen very quickly, depending on, of course, Mr. Markey's difficulty in creating the paperwork for legislation. I'm, I'm told that, well, that's by a couple of members of our council, they think that maybe that's usurping the power of the people from, say, Copley or Barberton or wherever, other than Norton. If we voted to send it and it went and was created, they wouldn't have had a say in it. Well, I submit to them that, that Copley trustees, elected by the people of Copley, voted to approve this. Barberton council voted, elected by the people, voted to approve this. Our council people all voted to approve this. And it was approved by all three municipalities. And the only thing, reason why we're talking again about approving it or disproving it is the fact that the judge seemed fit, and he was right, I think. He turned it down, like I said, because there were so many parcels involved in, in Muskingham watershed already, that he, it was a mistake in the paperwork for, at least according to him, to include them in our proposal. And I agree with him. So now, we have a list here of those parcels, names, addresses, parcel numbers, that could be submitted with the new application that would specifically exclude those parcels. And that's my recommendation, is to have our law director draw up, do whatever is necessary for, to correct the original paperwork or draw up new paperwork, and submit it to the courts to have this watershed completed. Because as I said before, it's been since 1930 that there were actually any major work done on the, on the tributaries or Wolf Creek. Our, our water source, now that we are part of Barberton Water Service, our water source, Barberton's water source, parts of Coventry, all over the place, comes from Wolf Creek. That's the main water source for the city water of Barberton. And, and if we don't, if we don't control the water that we drink from the city water services, it's no different than what Akron does from their lakes that provide their water source. They maintain them. And they do it in a very good way, I think. They, they do it professionally. And, and I think if these tributaries were cleaned out one time, if we were to have the Wolf Shed Water Conservancy set up properly, there will be a three-person triumphant that runs that watershed and that's steps down from the judges, that are appointed by one judge and two more, then there will be a three-person triumphant that, that says, they will have two years to come up with plans to correct the flooding problems mainly in the Wolf Creek watershed area. There will be, from, all indications from engineers that I've talked to, there would be retention and detention ponds built periodically to hold it back temporarily or permanently. There would be dredging done, widening, you know, everything that's necessary to control the flooding from the point north of here and, and east and west of here, from where the water comes from. I don't know if it starts south of us and work north or vice versa, or in the middle. I don't know. I'm not an engineer. But I know it all needs to be done. And the only way we can afford to do it is by everyone that owns parcels along these tributaries and Wolf Creek to contribute. And once that's done, and once the work is completed, they have two years to come up with a plan to, to complete it. And once that two years is up, then the judges will either approve that triumphant's plan or reject it. And once it's approved, then they can, or even while they're approving it, they can assess each individual property owner that's along these parcels at the amount that is decided that will be necessary after the engineers come up with a price, approximate price of this, then they would have the ability to assess the amount necessary. First time I heard about it in here from an engineer that was involved with Muskingham, he estimated as low as $14 a year per parcel. I think that's extremely low, and it would be a very generous estimate. I, I'm guessing from all the paperwork, and I've got hundreds of pages of it, or thousands of pages of it that I've looked over, I'm guessing anywhere from 40 to 70 million dollars that would be needed to do the initial work. And then they are allowed, as a triumphant, they're allowed to determine an amount that's necessary per year to maintain these tributaries in Wolf Creek and the ponds or whatever is built. So in order for us to not spend another 70 or 80 years complaining about the floods, I think we should, as a council, present this to the judges and let them decide whether it to be, whether it's necessary to be created or not. And I don't think there's any doubt in anybody's mind that we have a flooding problem in this area. And that would be the main objective. But there are several other objectives, excuse me, objectives that will be accomplished. There's a water source that would be generated by having these ponds. There's a, if necessary, well, different recreational facilities that could and should be created at the same time they solve the flooding issues. So I, I just think it's a, it's the right way to go. And, and I would hope that we can go forward with this. I'm trying to think, there was a couple other things, just briefly. I've already took up too much time here, but what was it? Anyway, does anybody have any questions that I could answer or anything? I'm-
Mr. Karen?
Yes. One question I have is, with the 1,800 parcels that were down in the Muskingham-
I'm sorry, Dan, I can't hear you.
Has that been redrawn? Have you eliminated the area? And has it, have the boundaries been redrawn clearly?
Yes.
For the new application?
This, this is the parcels here. These are the parcels. This is the map and everything that's been redone to indicate which, which parcels were originally in there. And now this is the list. I got them from Muskingham. I had Carrie get them from the Muskingham watershed. And they gave us a total list, detailed list of, of the parcels that had been included in the original proposal, but were now excluded if, when we resubmit it. So we know where they are.
The night of the program, I heard quite a few, at the end, quite a few extra ideas, which I thought some sounded pretty good. But looking forward to just the watershed concept.
Yeah.
I really think it's a good idea. We talked about this eight, 10 years ago with the Business Development Task Force. It's affected some of our major employers, some people that, some companies we can hardly afford to lose. And I think we should be supportive, although unfortunately, they did locate in a floodplain. So kind of, that's a mixed bag. But the resistance that we seem to be hearing from the northern cities, how are we approaching that? What kind of money do, would anyone estimate that we're going to have to spend to get this passed, to have this actually enacted? What kind of resistance are we looking at?
I, I don't know what kind of resistance we're looking at, other than what I hear from our city officials. I, I don't know how anybody would know the resistance until we do it, and they step forward and say, we're against this.
Wouldn't the resistance that-
From the cities.
Yellow Creek has-
For an example, there, the way I'm told, I don't know this from reading it. I, I haven't seen the court papers, but somebody told me recently that Bath and Akron might be presenting papers to the courts to, I don't know if they want to opt out of it, or if they don't want it passed at all, or what for Yellow Creek. Well, there's parts of Akron, a tiny sliver of Akron involved in, in water, in the Wolf Creek watershed. That was the thing that I was trying to remember a minute ago. The Wolf Creek watershed goes south. Yellow Creek watershed goes north. So there's a dividing point there. At some point, there's a dividing point where just about everything in that section of the county and Medina County also, of course, that goes to Yellow Creek, like it does here to Tuscarawas River. So those areas that, that are, that are partially on the borders of like Bath, very, very little to mention in Bath or Akron. There's tiny slivers of Wadsworth City. So all of these communities, I mean, like anything you do anymore, they can sue over it. They can step forward and say, well, we think that this should not be done because, and, and maybe they'll have a good reason. I don't know what their reason would be because it's not like the water's running uphill. The water's coming from all those communities that I just read off. That's where the source is. So the source of this water is coming from a certain area. And, excuse me, and so maybe they'll go to court, and maybe they'll find a judge that would say, okay, you can't do it because Wadsworth's against it. I, I don't know. I'm not, Joe's a lawyer. I, I don't know all about this. All I know for a fact, and these are not thoughts, these are facts. We have a wa, a flooding problem. And that flooding problem comes from north of here.
Yeah.
It doesn't come from the south. It comes from the north. And it comes from the dividing line where the water turns and goes north, or it turns and goes south. So everything that dumps into Wolf Creek from any of those tributaries comes from one of those townships that I read off. They don't come from, from Spencer or anyplace. They come from those townships. So those townships that have parcels along those tributaries, if this was approved by the judge, absolutely would be assessed, so much per parcel. And so whether it's, it's right, wrong, or in between, I think it's right because they are the source of the water. But I'm not a judge. So I would suggest that we file the paperwork like we did before. We've done this once before. And it would have already been through the courts if somebody would have been on the ball enough to say, here's 1,800 parcels. I'm sorry, let's take these out and resubmit it, which no one did. Otherwise, this would have already been adjudicated, and, and, and we'd be talking about Fred Martin Motors not having to move their vehicles every time it floods. Or we'd be talking about not buying property down in Barberton and vacating it because it floods all the time. We can't do anything about it. Well, that's not true. We can do something about it. We can, and we should.
I am in agreement, Jack. We need to do something. I am in agreement, Jack, we need to do something. The, the saying that comes to mind is something to the effect of, "I'd rather do something and fail than do nothing and succeed." So I'd rather see us try. I think we need to have an exact plan. If we need to eliminate some small slivers of Akron as a real problem, let's look at that, but I think that's something that council needs to decide. All seven of us, we have to kind of be behind this. This is an important step. It does involve a lot of money and also maybe some negotiation with our neighbors eventually. At least this opens the door to talk.
So, so one of the things, and I, I don't think that anyone disagrees that we have a flooding problem, we have to take care of it somehow. One of the things that I have heard from people is discomfort with the fact that we have a judge-appointed, three-person panel who is going to be able to impose fees and/or taxes on the city of Norton that the voters have nothing to say about.
Nor do we.
You can't go and vote against it, we can't do anything against it. This is going to be imposed by this triumvirate. And not only that, but there is absolutely no guarantee that a single penny of that money would be spent in the city of Norton. It might be spent in Copley, it might be spent in Bath, it might be spent in Akron, it might be spent in Wadsworth. So we have our residents who have a fee imposed on them by people they didn't vote for, and they're paying for something in Bath. Now, Jack, I don't disagree that we need to do something, but that's a little concerning.
Following up with a thought of where the money is spent, I agree with you to a certain degree, but if the money is spent fixing the problem that's up north that affects us down south, it's still money that's spent to fix our problem.
To your point there, Joe, I, I don't disagree with you either as far as them not having a vote on it, but my point, when, my response to that is, they elected us. And the reason they elected us was we are supposed, we don't always do it, but we're supposed to be doing what most people want us to do. The people that elected me, I don't know if they are in favor of the Wolf Creek watershed, I don't have a clue. And, and I had a public meeting and I advertised it for a month. And thirty people showed up after there was on Martin Motors' big sign, it was on newspapers, it was every place, and only thirty people out of all the communities involved showed up. And the reason why normally you can't get people to come to these kind of meetings is they elect us to do their bidding. And hopefully, if we do what's right and legal and honest, we're going to do what's right or what we think is right for those people that elected us. Now, whether the, like I said, I don't know if the people that elected me want the Wolf Creek watershed. You can't have a vote on everything. You just cannot have a vote on it. And as far as the, the amount of money involved, the amount of money involved, in my opinion, even if it was a hundred dollars a year per parcel, if it was a hundred even, that would be a small smidgen of amount of money to, to, if you spread it out all over all these parcels to solve the flooding problems. And it's not only Norton and Barberton and Copley that floods, these creeks that I'm talking about, these tributaries that are, that have not been maintained properly, you and I don't know exactly which farmer's field is flooding when it, when it overflows because of the lack of maintenance on those creeks. So those items would be considered, and when you say you don't know if there's going to be a dime spent in Norton, it's almost a hundred percent certainty that there would be money spent in Norton and Copley mainly. Most of the money probably would be spent in Norton and Copley due to the fact that that's where the major problems are. If, if they didn't put a reservation, I mean, a retention and detention ponds within the city limits of Norton and Barberton, they'd solve no problems. Because that's where the, that's where the problems are that needs to be addressed. A little stream upstream from here, such as Shogalogue, Shogalogue stream runs into, into this equation. And there are a few places, not a lot, but a few places that along Shogalogue, it floods so badly that the farmer can't plant a, an ear of corn. Just that little teeny stream. And if those streams were, were dredged properly and everything, which, any engineering plan that these people would come up with would have to address the flooding problem. That's what it's for, to start with. And so in order to say that Norton's not guaranteed money, and it's not only Norton that's paying the money, so you can't say Norton should get all the money, and you can't say Barberton should get it all, but what it would do would be, it would almost be a guarantee that, that Barberton would not have to take a grant that they got from the state of Ohio, which came from us to start with, but they wouldn't have to take that grant and buy up property in South Barberton that's flooding because they don't have a cure for the flooding problem. That's ridiculous. Those houses that they're buying up, absolutely, that's wonderful for the people whose house is being bought if they want to move. If they don't want to move, here's a city that comes along and buys their property and tells them to get out and they tear the house down. Because the city owns it and they don't want the property to be flooded. Well, if they don't want it to be flooded, fix the flooding problem. Don't tear down the house.
Wolf Creek Upper Watershed.
Water, it's a water conservancy, not a watershed. It's a water conservancy district.
But, but, but...
And there's a difference in the way they're set up.
But the difficulty still is, is that if we, if what we need is to replace floodplanes and put in retention ponds and dredge creeks, then shouldn't we say to our citizens, "This is what we need to do, and we as a council are going to impose whatever fee, and we're going to spend that here to fix the problem here," as opposed to, I guess my biggest problem is, I don't disagree with you about the flooding, I don't disagree with that at all. We've all heard it, we've all seen it, every spring we see it. The problem is, is that we take our authority that the people have given to us, it's not ours, it's theirs, they've given it to us, we turn it over to a judge who then turns it over to three people who say, "These are the fees that we're going to impose, and by the way, this is where we're going to spend it."
Exactly.
And I have, and I, and I have, I have difficulty with that.
Can I get in here?
Mr. Towesley?
I've got several things to add to that. I, I totally agree with the flooding, just like you said, and I think it's admirable to try to fix it. But the original numbers, you said there's eighteen hundred that are going to be subtracted, but the original numbers was over forty-two thousand parcels.
No, I'm sorry, Paul, the original number is forty-seven thousand acres. And, and out of those forty-seven thousand acres, this eighteen hundred is miniscule.
Okay, can I continue?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure of the numbers. You didn't give them the wrong numbers.
I read today, there was, in the original, there was forty-two thousand parcels in the Wolf Creek watershed conservancy district. It was forty-two plus. Anyhow, you're talking about six, seven, eight, maybe nine communities who all have different governments.
Twelve.
Were, you're suggesting that seven elected people out of a fraction of those make a decision for all of those people. Personally, I just think that's irresponsible.
Let me answer.
But beyond that, you, you have plenty of time to talk, just give me a couple of minutes. You're using Yellow Creek as your example. Almost every one of the local governments involved there voted against Yellow Creek. Sharon's center voted unanimous against it. Their reason was because they didn't want taxation without representation, similar to what Mr. Kern is speaking. Granger voted against it, I didn't get to count what they voted against it. Summit County engineer opposed it himself.
It would interfere with his fiefdom.
Well, in 2017, he offered a program, I'm not suggesting it's right for us, but he offered a program that would do something similar for four dollars a month. I originally opposed this in Norton, and the reason being is when Mr. Rozell stood before us, I asked him, "Can you guarantee this will do anything?" He couldn't guarantee that it would even work. I said, "Well, can you guarantee how much it's going to cost?" He couldn't guarantee what the cost would be.
No.
If, if I had someone coming in to do work on my home, and I said, "I need to know it's going to work and I need to know what it's going to cost," and they said, "Sorry, there's no chance I'm signing a contract with that person to do that work." So why would I do that as a representative of the, of the people who voted for me? Another contrast is last time when it passed, it was led by several administrations. You're suggesting a council do this unilaterally, I, I think it would be much better if one administration talked to another and they let it. And then if they could agree, then at least you have some kind of agreement. But just seven members sitting up here saying, "This is the way we see it, and if the rest of you don't like it, well, see you in court or whatever the consequences would be." I just think that's irresponsible.
Okay. Let me just, a few of the things you mentioned there, Paul. I was here when Roz, Mr. Rozell was here also, sat right behind him, discussed it with him afterwards and before. He wasn't that, he wasn't that, what would you call it, uncertain to me. That's not the words that I got from him. He, as I said, suggested at one time it was only like fourteen dollars a year, and I suggested to him, that's, I'm sure that's got to be completely too low, you couldn't do hardly anything with that amount of money if you took those parcels, whether it's forty-two or forty-seven thousand acres, doesn't matter, either way, it wouldn't have been enough money. And he said, "No, I agree, it might be a lot more." And I said, "Well, I know it would be a lot more," and we discussed it, and he, he agreed, like some of the figures I've got in here, of twenty-four million to fifty million, depending on when it's done. So if you're suggesting that we go to Copley, Barberton, Granger, Sharon, all of these communities and get their approval to submit this to the judge is what you're saying should be done, right?
I'm saying if you're going to do this, you should at least include that.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. You're saying that we should get the approval then. How long did it take us to get Barberton, Norton, and Copley to, to agree to what we did agree to and send it to the judge? You remember?
At least a couple of years.
It was a couple of three years, just to get our three major communities that's in the Wolf shed, Wolf Creek watershed to agree to send it to a judge. And that was with, with many reservations. So it went, it went on and on for two years. If we were to start this over again with Barberton, Norton, and Copley only, not including the other nine communities that are involved, it would be another ten years, at the very least, before we'd even get it before a judge. And then once it's before the judge, you could figure on another five years minimum before anything would be done. So our grandchildren would be up here on council talking about what we should have done as council people in 2020. I'm saying if, if we as a council, since we have the authority to do it and it's, and it's, as Joe suggests, there's no guarantees, and you say there's no guarantees, and Charlotte says there's no guarantees, there's no guarantees for anything. There's no guarantees for any project we take as a community. We're talking about increasing the parks right now and coming up with a park plan. Can anybody stand before council and say, "I guarantee you this is what's going to happen?" Nobody can guarantee something. But if you take somebody like engineers who are trained to do, hydrological engineers who are trained to solve problems like we have here for flooding, if I can't take their word for it, if I can't decide on what to do when I have professional advice in that area, then I don't know where you could get the advice from. You can't go around everybody's door and say, "Do you guarantee this?" No, of course not. Well, how are you going to get a consensus on anything if, if you don't move forward? We can argue about this for the next twenty-five years, which we've done for fifty years, right here in Norton, and nothing has been done. And Joe was talking about, "Take the money, Joe, and, and just answer what you're saying there. Take the money and, and get, maybe let the people in Norton vote and see if they want to spend money to solve the flooding problem." Well, first of all, even if the whole community voted at one hundred percent that they would be willing to fund the project to stop the flooding, you can't stop the flooding in Barberton and Norton by doing something in Norton. The flooding problem is not even close to being confined to Barberton and Norton only. Matter of fact, Barberton has less responsibility than we do, and we have less responsibility than Copley does. And it goes, continues, because if you go up in the air, like on Google, and follow all these streams, or if you get a map of the streams and follow them, like I've got here and showed on my presentation, you'll see where they all come from, and you'll see what, what the problems are, that none of those problems, I mean, majority of them, are not in Norton. We couldn't solve it if we had five hundred million dollars and tried to confine, confine five hundred million dollars into Norton's problems, we couldn't solve the flooding problem because it doesn't come from Norton. It comes from upstream, every bit of it.
So what's, what's the difference between a conservancy and a district?
It's just the way they're set up, Scott. You have to sort of read that. One takes, one takes a certain amount of petitions from a certain amount of people, and the other one can be, the other one can be, the one that I'm suggesting that we set up can be accomplished with five hundred signatures.
Right, I got that, but...
Or, or the...
If we're already in a conservancy, then how can we also be put into a district?
No, the, we're not in a conservancy. We're, no, what we are, we are, that's just the layout of where it shows the water creek is.
No, this is Muskingham watershed.
No, we're not in the Muskingham watershed.
But this is saying that it includes Wolf Creek, Norton, Barberton, Paul.
It does not.
But I mean, I know it's, it's Wolf Creek.
There's, there's no, there's no watershed conservancy set up north of South Barberton until you get to Yellow Creek. We're in between the two. If we, if we were to form the Wolf Creek watershed, it will start at the northernmost boundaries of the Muskingham watershed, and it will run into the edge of Yellow Creek watershed.
And where's that start?
And going west, going west, it's only going to go to where the water runs this way.
But where's that start on the Yellow Creek?
Well, I don't know the exact, you know, dimensions or anything. I've got them right here. We have it here. There's a, there's an exact street addresses of every single property that Paul's talking about, the forty-two thousand or whatever. Every one of them is in this paperwork right here, and it shows the exact address, the parcel numbers, that would be included in all the assessments. And none of those that are included now, if you exclude these eighteen hundred or whatever they are, none of those would be included in that. Only those that are not in a, in a conservancy or a watershed already set up. There's none set up in Wolf Creek.
So again, well, I'm sorry. According to this, Nevco heads Wolf Creek Upper Watershed.
That's just, that's just a term that they use. The watershed means where does the water come from and everything. That doesn't mean a conservancy that's set up to maintain that watershed, that's like, for an example...
According to their bylaws here, I mean, I'm just asking, I don't know.
I'm telling you, there's no, there are no governmental agencies, none, set up to maintain and dredge, take care of the Wolf Creek watershed or any of its tributaries. There are none.
But, but so at the end of the day, no one is, no one, I don't think in this room, is disagreeing that there is a flooding problem, and it primarily is down on Barber Road. I mean, there are other places in the city where we have localized flooding, but it's primarily down there. No one's disputing that. The dispute is, is how do you pay for it? Who are you going to empower to get the money from the people to pay for that? And that's where my problem lies. That, it, it doesn't have anything to do with...
Do you have a suggestion that you could get enough money to go into Sharon Township, Granger Township, Barberton? Granger Township, Bath, Wadsworth Township, Wadsworth? Do you have a suggestion, or does anybody have a suggestion that would create a pool of funds, or a substantial continuing source of funds to maintain, not only to correct the problems that are existing now, but to maintain the streams in the future where we don't have to go back and do this every fifty years or a hundred years? If they maintain them, if they set up a fund, it's just like any other thing that you do through the government. If, if you want to maintain the highways, you know, somebody has to pay, there has to be a source for funding for the roads, and there has to be a source for funding for these creeks. And the city of Norton cannot do it on their own.
And, and that is true. And, and so let's look back at what we were talking about, the parks. One of the things that we talk about before we spend money, and one of the reasons that I had difficulty with putting the lights up in, down here, was because before you start spending money, you really need to have a plan.
That's what that two years is for.
But, but what you've done is you have authorized the taxing authority before you have the plan. You really ought to have the plan before you authorize the taxing authority. And I, at least you ought to know what you're paying for before you pay for it.
But there has, Joe, I'm sorry, but there has to be a way to pay for that plan.
After you know the plan.
No, no, before the plan's built.
Why, why would I, going back, why, so if I have to have, if I'm going to have a cement driveway put in,
A what?
A cement driveway put in. Why would I say, why would I go to someone and say, you, you charge me whatever you think it's going to take to put that driveway?
That's not what's going on here.
It is.
No, oh, let me finish. It's not. It's not what's going on here. You're saying that, that they're, they're going to just jump in and build all this stuff and then pay for it later. That's not what they're doing. They're going to authorize, first of all, they're going to authorize through judges that triumphant that you're discussing that's bad for the people, and that you think that they're just going to be able to go and do anything they want to and raise funds any way they want to. That's not true. Those three people are going to, within the first two years after the judge sets this up, those three people have, have two years to come up with a plan. And those, those plans then will not be just approved by that three people. They will be submitted to the judges, and the judges will approve or disapprove of it. And those plans have to be paid for.
So during those two years, who sets the tax rate?
I don't know how the, the amounts or anything else. I, I know.
But that's, that's what we're getting at.
Well, you can't come up with that. It's impossible. You can't say how much something's going to cost for an, tell me what the engineer charges us.
If Yellow Creek already exists, then you can't look at that and get some type of estimate based off the number? But that's what I'm saying.
That's where these estimates come from that I'm giving you.
So what rates are they talking, estimating?
Muskingdom and stuff. If you have an engineer that comes in and designs a house for you, you think he's going to design it for nothing?
No, but I'm asking you what the rates are.
Rates? God, don't you mean engineering rates per hour?
Tax rates. So in Yellow Creek and Muskegon, how much are they charging per parcel?
Muskingdom's only charging nothing right now. Muskingdom has eliminated their assessments.
Okay.
They eliminated them.
But what do they do?
Wait a minute, the way they did that was they come up with methods to sell, that was the main thing. They sold royalty rights to property that they acquired by doing all this waterworking stuff. And throughout the years, they started out at, I, I forget what it was, these figures are here, say twelve dollars or fourteen dollars a year. They started out at X number of dollars per year. Well, throughout the years now, this last year, I believe it was, or year before last, they completely eliminated that assessment. The people in the Muskingdom watershed now pay no assessments, none. And, and that's why it's proven that these things pay off, like the, the the watershed down in Athens, the Miami River. That's went down throughout the years, the, the assessments for it. And the way it does it is, is just for an example, Muskingdom sold oil and gas rights from the properties that they owned. And so they were able to eliminate it. You can take Yellow Creek, I don't know, I haven't researched Yellow Creek as far as their rates, but I'm sure that the rates are there, what they're, what they're coming up with. There's just no way to possibly say, I guarantee you, you're going to pay twelve dollars and sixty cents a year.
Wasn't looking for an absolute, wasn't looking for a guarantee, I was looking for a ballpark. That's all I asked you.
Well, they're, they're here.
But I'm asking, what are they? I mean, I hear all this other stuff, but I haven't heard any actual.
Well, I mean, if you want me to dig through here, I can get it for you, but I thought I gave you guys quite a bit of information on this.
You know, it, it just reminds me of my dad's old saying.
Here, I'm waiting, I'll read it to you.
You shouldn't buy a pig in a poke, but anyway, okay, Charlotte.
Thank you. I can honestly say I've been, I was to, I believe every meeting held in every community on the watershed district, I went to Jack's presentation. I was here when Mr. Rozell was here. A, and I've said it over and over again, a lot of this information is based on the consultant, Mr. Rozell, or whatever his name was, that worked for Muskingdom, and yet he did not eliminate eighteen hundred parcels out of the information given to us that was basing this knowledge on. So that right there would make me wonder just how accurate the majority of his information was, because that was a pretty big piece right there. Eighteen hundred parcels out of Barberton. Norton knew what we had in it.
Individual creeks and that.
Hold on, hold on. Mrs. Whipke has the floor.
And there was, and I'm sorry, I'm, oh, I said back then, and one of the reasons that it took so long for us to get that settled was because Norton was insisting that we had a voice. We fought about that. We wanted a voice. And I always said, you take this to the courts, the judge makes the appointments, we have three people in charge, that we no longer have a voice. We were trying to find a way where we could get one, but there will be no guarantee that we will have a major voice in that. But we will be a major part of the contributing tax properties. And there was a lot of good ideas that came up from the presentation. Do we have flooding here? Yes, we do. Well, I'm all for building our own retention, detention ponds. I'm all for cleaning out that culvert area that was discussed at Jack's presentation. I find fault with the way that seventy-six was put in, and the engineers that developed that. But to just say, here, take our money, you three people, go hire whoever it is you're going to hire to put together a plan that we will pay for, along with whoever is drug into it. And by the way, it, it's, there is legal documentation of the cities that actually did file that they wanted out of the Yellow Creek. Although it's not really, they, they have done so. Just some of them, and others said that they were going to. And I agree also that I don't want to be responsible for pushing this on to Copley people, Barberton people, Granger people, Bath people, or anybody else. But I don't want my people to be paying for what's going to be going on elsewhere at the say-so of God knows who. I have no, I, I don't like the way the Mad District was set up, and it took us forever to be able to get some control over that. And that was due to people signing petitions. They got their five hundred signatures. Many people signed those petitions thinking it was going to go to the ballot, and they were going to actually have a vote on it. And turned out, once they signed their names to those petitions, they had no say. Because not only did they not get to vote, they gave up their right to go to the court and speak against it. Once you sign the petition in favor, you were denied the right to speak against it. So I would rather us find a way to take, we're going to take Norton people's money for flooding, I want it fixing Norton. And then those, we'll be sending more water down to Muskingdom, but apparently they can handle it. And aren't there a lot of Muskingdom monies coming from park areas? That I thought that they had a lot of their stuff set up in the parks, and that'd also help pay for it. And I'm not so sure we can set up a system like that, because that's a pretty large area down there. But I'm all for fixing the flooding, but I want to, if I'm going to tax people here, I want the money to be spent here.
If that was possible, Charlotte, if you're done, are you done?
Yep, I'm done.
If there, if that was possible, I'd be a hundred percent behind it. It's just, it's a financial, physical impossibility for the city of Norton residents to set up a funding to solve, that would solve our flooding problems. It's just not doable by one community. Copley can't do it, Barberton can't do it by themselves. None of our communities can do it by ourselves, and that's why the watershed programs are set up. Is because everybody who knows anything at all about financing these major projects know for a fact that the individual communities cannot do it on their own.
So wouldn't it make more sense, rather than try to jam something through to other communities without them having a say in it? And then them turning around like Yellow Creek, fighting it through the court system, tying it up for the next, God knows how long? Wouldn't it make more sense for the leaders of each community to get together and discuss the problem? Because obviously, it's a problem for each community. It's not just Norton. I mean, it's Barberton, it's Norton, it's Copley, you know, on up, all the way up. Unless they get together and, under some type of regionalism, and come to a consensus, trying to push something through is not going to get anything accomplished, because they're going to fight it. And then it's just going to be tied up. And yeah, we, we took action, but it's action that we were pretty confident that wasn't going to go anywhere. I'm not, I'm not in the habit of, of pushing something through if I think it's just going to get tied up or fail. That's, that makes no sense. You have to come to a consensus with the other communities to accomplish this. Like you said, you know, Norton alone cannot do it. Copley alone cannot do it. Norton and Copley can't do it together. We need all the areas together, so it makes sense that if the city, county officials get together, work together, and come up with a plan. And maybe it's still the watershed district. But they have to be in agreement to make it work. Without them being in agreement, it will fail.
Anything further? Is there a motion to move this forward for legislation?
I won't pass, I'll have a motion. I make a motion to, to have Justin draw up whatever papers is necessary and present to council and legislation for the next council session.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
With that approach, if we're just looking at plans and seeing what the possibilities are, and we're not taking an actual action, but bringing it forward, I, I will second that.
So the motion is to have legislation drawn up to create the watershed district. Is that what you're seconding?
I believe that's what I'm seconding.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to have legislation prepared by the law director to create the watershed district. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Carrot?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
No.
And that's it.
Well, it's committee of the, oh, it is work session.
So it still passes?
Right, so we will have legislation drawn up, and.
Excuse me, Joe, before you. I, I don't think it's necessary actually to draw up new legislation. I, I think it was discussed here once before about redoing the legislation that was already drawn up and voted affirmatively by us, Barberton, and Copley. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe, I can't speak for them, but I don't believe that Barberton and Copley are against this. I don't, I don't think they would be against it in, in resubmitting the original application to the judge. I, I think that's, I think Justin should be asked to communicate with them and see if they would be willing to resubmit.
The motion was to draw up legislation and have it taken to a vote of council.
Well, Joe, I thought I'd said no, because I really think we should be talking to administration with this too.
I agree, but we had a motion and a second in the committee, and.
I'm in agreement with you, Mr. McLean, but I think we need to put.
Talk to administration.
If we have some format for this, which is what we just sort of voted for, it brings it forward, it can always be voted down. But it gives us some discussion then with the other two communities. It brings it to the next level. It was my intention by seconding that.
So there was a motion and a second, and the vote passed for legislation to be drawn up. It wasn't supposed to be at the next council meeting, so we will discuss it at the next work session.
Okay.
That will be a committee of the whole.
Yes.
Oh, no, it won't be, it'll be a work committee.
Well, if you wanted at the beginning of the regular, we could do it then.
Be a work committee again, okay.
I'm sorry, wait till the next.
No, at the, at the committee, at the work session is when we'll look at it again.
Mr. Kern.
Yes, Mr. Towesley.
Is there anything binding that just happened, I guess is my question.
The only thing that just happened is, is that the admin, that Mr. Markey is going to draw up the legislation to have us enter in or, or ask for the watershed district to be created.
To your knowledge, would that still have to come before council?
It would still have to come before council.
Yeah, all this did was just authorize Justin to draw something up or take a look at the existing one that Jack was referencing and pull something together and present it to us, and then at the next work session, we'll discuss it further in more detail and.
Okay, so, so just for clarification, we didn't just say something that's already been drawn, send?
No.
No.
Okay.
That was not, that was not the motion and the second. The motion was.
That's what I wanted to make sure, otherwise I was going to suggest we suspend rules that all of council vote on it.
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay, property maintenance code. So we have been talking about taking a look at the property maintenance code for some time. We have attached to here, chapter fourteen ninety-eight. I know that, at least from my point of view, I shouldn't speak out of turn. Okay. I really need to know from administration where the complaints are coming from. What, what, what are we hearing as far as complaints are concerned? You know, I, I know that there are two. Junk cars are one of them, and mowing and cleaning yards are the other. Those, those are the two that we hear every spring and through the summer. But there's got to be something else. I would suggest that we ask Mr. Berman to be at the next work session with a list of things that he hears most often. So we can start working on this in a, in a some type of a smart way, looking at those things that we need to take care of first and moving through it. We're never, I don't think that we're ever going to be able to pass a complete property, new property maintenance code. We tried it before. Didn't work then, it's not going to work now. Everybody's going to find something they don't like. They're not going to like this little piece, they're not going to like that little piece, therefore the whole thing is going to die. And so we need to take a look at each little piece and put it together from there. So I'll just open it up to comments from there.
Well, Joe, what I see, this is that chapter fourteen ninety-eight, right?
Correct.
And really, when you look at some of these, I do see a lot of these out there, but this is all complaint-driven, correct? So really, we don't really go out there and look for this stuff.
Right, but that's the current administration and their philosophy. Doesn't mean that if we implemented this, that down the road, a new administration goes out on their own and truly enforces it.
Well, we don't have the manpower to do it anyways right now, do we?
I wouldn't think so.
No, I wouldn't think.
Okay.
Which is why it's complaint-driven.
Okay.
So that, I mean, that is my suggestion, is, is to invite Mr. Berman to the next committee of the whole and get some input from him, since he's kind of like the feet on the, on the street, and he's the one that hears the complaints and goes and looks at them, and then we can go from there. Any other discussion?
I brought it up for exactly that same reason, is we'd had several complaints in Ward Three, and it all came back to me sending Bill Berman out to somewhere, or asking him to go check a house, vacant house, places that seemed otherwise blighted or abandoned. And it was trying to get some teeth to legislation so that we could. And it was trying to get some teeth to legislation so that we could do something, take some action. But I've left messages several times for Mr. Berman to contact me and get back to me, and I haven't been answered in quite a long time. So, I think bringing him here and giving him advance notice, having him make that laundry list, which I'd be happy to contribute to, I think that's the best approach. Then we know what we're trying to do. Why fix something that, uh, it doesn't need fixed?
Mr. Kernan?
Yes, Mr. Towesley.
I would just like to point out, um, chapter 1498 basically deals with structures of houses.
Correct.
It doesn't deal with yards at all, so I don't know what that chapter is, but maybe that should be included.
Yeah, I, and, and I think that's a good idea, because this, you're, you're absolutely correct, this talks about more about the exterior maintenance of a particular, of the structures and stuff. So, if we can, maybe for the next meeting, have that chapter included. Anything further on that? All right, then, if we could coordinate with administration, have Mr. Berman here at the next meeting?
Okay.
The next committee of the whole.
Yes.
Okay. All right, letter C, agricultural district application, Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, thank you, Joe. This is just a renewal for agricultural district designation by George and Teresa Blankenship, and, uh, I think it's pretty obvious that it should be okayed and sent forward to, uh, to add, we'll add it to the next agenda, because it's, uh, it's something that's been done in the past, and it's obviously being used as, as stated, 83 acres over on Hame Town Road. So, I would suggest that it be moved forward to the next, uh, next agenda.
Just one question before, is Mr. or Mrs. Blankenship here?
No, they're not here.
Did we ever hear from...
I spoke with her this morning.
Okay, is that...
Yes.
Mistake?
It was just a mistake, and so I went ahead and corrected it, I didn't ask her to come in.
All right, so, letter B in the application should say, does any of the land lie within a municipal corporation limit, and it should be marked yes? Okay, thank you.
Just, just for record, Joe, it is, uh, from what I could find, it's right beside Town and Country, it's that property there that they farm every year.
Right, right, okay.
So, so it's definitely within the city limits, after I looked it up.
Their prior applications were all marked yes.
Okay, so it was just a mistake, okay. So, there's a motion to add resolution number 232020 to the next agenda for the first reading, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, with the clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Carron?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
All right. Letter D, advanced taxes from tax year 2019, Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just something we do every year, it's boilerplate, this is so that we can get our taxes, actually, before they cut, they get them all collected and can be using the money, that's why it's called an advance. We actually should have passed this earlier, late, late last year, is when we normally get it, and somehow it got overlooked. So, we need to get this done as soon as possible so that we can get access to the dollars. So, because of that reason, I'll be looking to waive the second and third readings with emergency language. And if nobody has any questions on this, like I said, it is boilerplate, we do it every year. I make a motion to add this to council's next agenda next week.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to add resolution number 242020 to the next agenda with emergency language for first reading, and looking to waive second and third. Any further discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Excuse me, Joe, let me...
Yes, Mr. Gaynor.
Before you go ahead, um, on the previous one, the agricultural thing?
Yes.
For the Blankenships, uh, I know I read in here that there, there has to be a hearing set up, correct?
February 10th.
February 10th. Okay, so...
Thank you.
You just might wanna mention that.
Thank you, that, yes, that will be held February 10th. I think I just signed the thing to pay for the advertising, so...
We have any others that managed to get in?
No, there's, I'm waiting on just one other that is due up for renewal this year, and I haven't heard, they have until the first week of March.
We could not wait on this one, though, because of the time when it was filed, so...
Right.
You only have 30 days from the time it comes in.
It'd just be nice about to get them all.
Yes, it would.
There's only two this year.
Okay.
And we're doing one.
Good. All right, um, any topics for next session that anybody wants to discuss?
Yes.
Mr. Gaynor?
Under utilities, um, quite some time ago, we discussed and had legislation as far as 5G installations were concerned. I've checked with the administration a couple of times on it, and, uh, the way I understand it, uh, I think there's only been one application to install 5G. And at, that application was handled by, I can't remember the name of the type of app, of permit that was issued for them to install it. There might have been more than one, but to my knowledge, there's, there's one in particular, because I happened to see it being installed and questioned it. It's at the corner of Hame Town and Greenwich Road, it was installed, and it was issued a permit at a cost of $50 for the permit. We, we, uh, if you'll, I have the thing here, paperwork and everything on the particulars for these 5G installations, what can and cannot be done, and so on and so forth. One of the things that, that this covers is, it, it issue, it tells you what fees can be charged for, for these 5Gs. And I know we covered this once before, but just briefly, I'll go over here, uh, we can charge up to $500 for a non-recurring fee, including a single upfront application that would include up to five small wireless facilities. In other words, they could have put that facility that they put at Hame Town and Greenwich, and then they could have put four more someplace, for a $500 application fee, permit fee. We charged them $50. Also, these are, these are, to my, best of my knowledge, no one is inspecting them. The installation of them, the design of them, or anything, we have a right to, to inspect the installation of them, as long as we don't prohibit them unnecessarily. We have a right to check on how they look, what color even they are, which probably wouldn't matter to some people. But there's a lot of regulations that, that are, that are allowed to the cities, and I think we should discuss the fact that no one is, uh, no one is inspecting them, first of all. There are exact regulations involved, that as far as I'm concerned, there should be someone that, well, once that permit is pulled and issued, we should have a city representative, maybe our city engineer, I expect, would be the only person on staff, or, or that we pay, that would be qualified to go out and inspect these. I'm sure Bill would not say that he's qualified, and I'm sure as heck wouldn't be, because it, it, it lists certain things, you know, that they can or cannot do. And I would prefer that we have somebody, though, that goes out and inspects these facilities, and makes certain that they're put up, that like, you know, there are only supposed to be so many cubic feet, and, and they're supposed to be so high above our telephone poles, and there's reasons for all that. You know, there's, there's, um, technical, uh, engineering reasons for all those regulations. So, I would like to see us discuss it, and maybe come up with, either us or the administration come up with fees, especially the fees that we're bypassing by not charging these phone companies, or like Verizon and them, to come in and install these. $50 is a minor fee compared to, uh, that's a right-of-way fee that they charged, and I remember it now, it was called a right-of-way fee. And that was just a, a cover-all thing that means nothing to the 5G facilities.
Carrie, could you maybe send a memo or something to Justin, or, or Robert, or both, to see if they can fill in some of the blanks about what the fees are, and what they're for, and who's looking at that stuff, before we discuss it further? Thank you.
I know at one point, the judge ruled that their utility is not, uh, so it limits...
Public utilities.
Yeah, so it limits some of what we can do, but I, I agree that, you know...
If you all don't have a copy of these, maybe, Charlotte and I went to a presentation on this, and, uh, I kept the, uh, some of the paperwork from it, I, I'm not sure if this was it, or if we got this through council, but...
What's the date on that?
Uh, this is, um...
I'm just looking to see whether that was...
2019, but it concerns, if you remember, we had until, we had until, uh, such-and-such a date, I've got it in here, I think it was, uh, March or April of last year, we had to come up with, with regulations, and which we did, to a certain extent...
I thought we did, yeah, yeah.
Uh, as council, but, uh, those regulations cannot be so prohibitive that would stop them from installing them, but they emphasize, uh, in, in several places here, community options, one of them, one of the main ones is addressing the local aesthetic values. So, they can't put a great big ugly refrigerator-sized box on a telephone pole, or, you know, there's other things that can and cannot do. We have pretty much a lot of, a lot of things that we can regulate on them, and some that we wouldn't want to, maybe, but...
I thought we passed legislation last, last year that pretty much followed some type of a, um, standard-type, that all of the communities were using, I thought we took care of that.
That's what we did, exactly.
Okay.
And, and, but we have no one, that's what I'm getting at, we have no one that's...
Okay.
That's addressing those regulations.
Okay. All right. Anything further?
Yes, one item, and you and I spoke about that last evening. Uh, I'd like to, I guess I have to come through council or bring it up, that I'd like to have a Ward Three, uh, committee meeting?
Look into the...
I'd like to have a Ward Three committee meeting, thank you. And it's really just to discuss, um, some things that are coming up. Of course, there's changes going on with the golf course, um, bringing people up to speed with, there's some water that's being run, uh, people, some people have asked me how they could tap in, when's water coming, a number of different things that affect Ward Three, which aren't necessarily unique to us, but we're sort of in the center of it all. And I, if you have a community meeting where people are welcomed, it's a little different than having a, a city council where you have to appear and, and be on a microphone. It's a little bit warmer and friendlier, and I'd like to have that community meeting. I understand that I need to ask council to have, uh, clerk of council to join me? How, what's the process?
So, so, in order for the clerk to do anything outside of regular council business, which would be like your town hall meeting, um, I think that we would just need to agree that that's a legitimate council purpose, and then she could attend that, and so I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
Okay.
He handled it.
You're right. Are, is there any objection to that?
I'd just say, you know, make sure you coordinate it with her, so...
Right.
Obviously, it's gonna be something in hours, she doesn't normally work, and she may have plans, so...
I've asked her to come up with some dates, and honestly, I want to do it late in February, but it may be too late to do that, but we'll talk about the dates, and I'll bring that up maybe next Monday.
Before you, uh, you, I want to make certain I understood what you're talking about, you're talking about some of the citizens maybe want to know about the water that's coming into that area and stuff. Well, right now, we, we, as council, as far as I know, don't know ourself. Uh, we don't, we wouldn't know, if you set up a meeting tomorrow night, I couldn't answer any questions if somebody would ask about the water line. I know that eventually, we're gonna run a water line from Brookside to Shellheart, up Shellheart to the corner, and that's the best I can tell you.
Yeah, I think the, the purpose here is to open the discussion, to find out who wants it, and to make sure that they know that we're looking at it. There's nothing definite that can be said about that. Right now, I can't tell them a whole lot about the golf course project either, I haven't heard much, but I'm hoping to at least get with the administration. I understand there may be some things happening here in the spring soon, I'd like to know what those are also. So, before I walk into that, I do plan on doing some research on that. Uh, also, we have, um, road plans that we've all submitted, and I'm hoping the administration may make some decisions on who's, who's getting what this year. So, there's a number of different things that I think the community would be interested in, and they're not as apt to come out to city council to find out those answers. This is just a, a dialogue. And you know full well that if we don't talk about it openly, sometimes people make up their own stories. So, I'd rather have the right information out there and coming from us.
I didn't, Mr. Fowler, I think, uh, Carrie, didn't he give us a list of, uh, roads that were being considered for paving and stuff next this coming year? I, I know he mentioned it at a meeting.
Okay, I got, Carrie, yeah, he did, and he's going out for bids right now, so...
That's what I thought.
It's gonna be soon.
So, I don't have a problem with there being a citizen meeting at all, and that the clerk of council would attend that, um, as part of her regular duties, and figure out comp time or whatever beyond that, so...
Thank you.
Anything else under topics? Um, I will let everyone know, see, I'm not forgetting, Carrie.
Oh, thank you.
Um, filled and wrapped Easter baskets needed. We're doing Easter baskets again this year. Easter Sunday is April 12th, and we are collecting Easter baskets until Friday, March 13th. They especially need baskets for older kids ages 13-plus. Um, I think last year, we kind of decided you collected 150-plus, somewhere around in there, um, so hopefully, maybe we can do better than that this year, so, um, it's through Summit County Children's Services.
Correct.
Um, those are the children that are receiving those baskets, so, um, kind of keep that in mind, and if you can give, can you do cash?
Of course.
Of course.
I think they always take cash.
Cash, checks?
Checks made out to...
Right, right.
Uh, Summit County Children's.
Summit County Children's Services. So, um, take a look at that, there's some time, um, we've got about a month and a half before that ends, but, uh, we'd like to start collecting those now. Anything else to come before council tonight? Come, come up and give your name and address, and...
Judith Lee, 3227 Creekside Drive, Norton. I got a letter in the mail about the closing of Chase Bank. Uh, is there anything, have, have, uh, council or the city discussed what's gonna go in that location, uh, and when?
Not that I know of, all I know is Chase Bank made a corporate decision that they didn't need a branch there, and they're closing it.
Wow.
That's, that's all I know.
Okay, thank you so much.
I, I think, and honestly, I think a lot of banks are doing that, they are consolidating. People are doing a lot more online banking, they're taking pictures of their che, I don't know how to do it yet, maybe I'm gonna...
So, no word of any bank coming into the city then?
We have not heard anything about that.
Okay, and the question on the Easter baskets is, are you taking items, or you will need the whole basket?
They, they need to be completed...
Completed.
And in cellophane wrap.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and then, um, Ms. Lee, if you could also put the, um, age and gender on the outside, a little tag that says girl or boy in the age.
Or boy for, on the basket.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else to come before council?
Send information on the web.
Um, I don't, I don't know, do you know, is this information on the website?
Um, not yet, I wanted to run it through you first, but it'll be posted on website, then probably also on the side.
Good, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Okay, very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.